Everyone, thank you for your patience. Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman representing the 2nd District and also Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District, Councilman Isaac Yishy Slifer from the 5th District, and missing from our committee is going to be Councilman Bullock, so Councilman Bullock is absent today. We also have from the Council President's staff Nikki Thompson in attendance, and from the Mayor's Office, we have Sophia Geprenwatt and also Nina Themelis. And actually, from the Council President's office, we also have Matt Stagman. At this time, and last, I apologize, we also have in attendance staff to the Committee, Matthew Peters. Before we get started, as always, just a couple of ground rules and just asking that you please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair, that you do mute yourself when you are not speaking, that before you speak, you please identify yourself, the agency or organization that you are with, and also your position. After you're speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair, and we just ask that Committee members and city agency officials keep your video on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical difficulties that are preventing you from doing so. Today's hearing is on Legislative Oversight 22-0023, Legislative Oversight Hearing 2021 Child Fatality Review Report for the purpose of calling on the Baltimore City Health Department, other relevant agencies and partners to brief the Committee on the 2021 Child Fatality Review Report. We will start with brief opening remarks, then we're going to hear from the Health Department and other agencies. Then Committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions. After that, we will move on to public testimony if there are members from the public who wish to testify. According to the Child Fatality Review Report, 208 children in Baltimore City lost their lives suddenly and unexpectedly from 2016 to 2020. The vast majority of these deaths were to Black children and children who had experienced a great deal of trauma and adversity in their short lives. The report also notes that these deaths were overwhelmingly preventable. The onus is on all of us and each and every one of our agencies to see to it that history does not continue to recycle and repeat itself. We all have a role to play, but first I feel that we have, we need to have a strong understanding of what it is exactly that we are out to combat. We're going to hear from the Health Department and other agencies, Committee members. I just ask that you hold your questions until we have heard from all of the agencies, and we will start with the Health Department at this time.
Good morning, everyone. This is Kelly Eastman, Deputy Chief of Staff with the Baltimore City Health Department. Today, we have Rebecca Dineen and Kathy Costa on to provide the presentation. I just wanted to check, I don't think they have access to share their slides at the moment. If we could provide that.
Sure.
So ahead nod, we good? Great. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca and Kathy. Thank you. I think Rebecca is having some technical difficulties. Kelly, I can just go ahead and start in Rebecca's absence. I do see that she is having some technical difficulties, so apologies for that. I'll introduce myself. My name is Kathy Costa. I am Director of Strategic Initiatives with the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health at the Baltimore City Health Department, and one of my roles is to direct the Baltimore City Child Fatality Review. And I will also ask that Rebecca interrupt me if she is able to.
I didn't actually get in.
Oh, wonderful. Great. Go ahead.
Okay, I really apologize. I'm having some technical issues. So thank you all for your patience with my computer today. I am Rebecca Dineen. I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Maternal and Child Health. I'm so glad to be able to have this opportunity to speak with you all and Kathy on the team about Child Fatality Review, which began in Maryland in 1999, though it's been around for a long time as a process. The basic purpose of Child Fatality Review, if you would just go back to the back slide, is to make sure that we have all of the systems and actions in place when a child dies to figure out why this child died and what we can do to prevent it from happening again. Next slide, please. And so the process was developed in 199, back in the early part of the 20th century, and it was a multidisciplinary review of any unexpected child death, birth to 17, and required by, and it was required by state law. And the idea is to be action-oriented, so we want to prevent child fatalities for any child who is at risk for fatality, and we also want to make sure that our investigation and community response is appropriate. The main purpose of Child Fatality is not to blame a particular agency, because oftentimes, agency are involved and may be aware of the death that happened in the child. It's not about the blaming of an agency, but it's really identifying what are the systems that could have been in place to prevent the child from die, from any child dying in the future. The process is confidential, it's data-driven, and it's oriented to be, having the community at the center of the review. Slide, please. The Child Fatality Review Team is made up of whole different agencies in the city, from the Department of Social Services and the Health Department as being key agencies, along with the Police Department and the State's Attorney's Office. And we are partnering closely with Monzi, with the Mayor's Office of Safety and the Mayor's Child and Family Services Office to ensure that our process is achievable, time-bound, and well documented. And we have both community and city agency partners who are involved in the review of these deaths. Next slide, please. Key to all of this is recognizing that there isn't, when a child dies, this isn't a point in time, and that point in time needed to be corrected, or there were certain agents involved in that point in time. Well, that's true oftentimes in a child death, whether it be an accident, a drowning, or a shooting, or a sleep-related infant death. There are, it is always important to be looking at long life course. So Child Fatality Review, having worked on it for well over a decade, is recognizing that there are, we need to be intervening along the life course to be really making a difference in the overall child fatality rate in the city. So we need to be recognizing the child's parents and how their parenting practices are and what happened to them as children. We need to look at pregnancy and infancy and how that whole period went, how stressful it was. Early childhood is extremely significant in terms of whether a child is ready for school, how their learning processes are, school age, what their experiences are in school. Are they bullied? What are the other experiences that might be had? And then how they, how healthy and prepared they are for young adulthood. So there's really a larger community and social context, and if we lose that perspective when we're in these Child Fatality Reviews, we'll never be able to make a lifelong change, a generational change, to the very high rates we have right now in Baltimore City. Next slide, please. We do have action and accountability arms. We take the recommendations that are made from Child Fatality Review, and those that are for children that are infants and toddlers. We have an initiative called Be More for Healthy Babies that is, has as three main goals, to reduce infant mortality, to help prepare children for school, and to reduce maternal mortality, and that is, and make sure that children are safe in their homes to prevent child abuse neglect. And there's a steering committee for Be More Healthy Babies that takes the Child Fatality Review recommendations and puts them into action. We've been particularly active and successful around the reduction of sleep-related infant deaths in our Be More Healthy Babies Initiative. We also now have a whole steering committee under the Mayor's Office that is an executive committee that will also take these fatality findings and recommendations and put them into action. And this is a new and sort of redesigned process to ensure that not only are our younger residents having all of the supports needed to have a thriving life, but that we also are dealing with our older children, our young children who are victims of shootings and suicides, and making sure that we have the right systems and practices in place to prevent those deaths in the future. Next slide. And so we did create a Child Fatality Report. This was authored by Kathy Costa, who is here with us today to present the findings from 208 fatalities, and she will share the recommendations from that, and then what our priorities both are in the short term and in the long term to make sure that we have action in the city around child fatalities. So with that, I'll pass it over to Kathy.
Thank you, everyone. Introducing myself again, Kathy Costa, Director of Strategic Initiatives in the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health at the City Health Department, where I direct Child Fatality Review. Going to talk a little bit, just give you some basic data on the cases and then share our recommendations, as Rebecca said. So one of the most important takeaways from our review of these 208 cases over a five-year period was that homicide was the leading cause of unexpected death, and about a third of all children who died unexpectedly died of homicide. In the previous five-year period, sleep-related deaths were the leading cause of death. But as Rebecca just shared, we've worked quite hard over the last 10 years to reduce those deaths, and they have, they have come down, but that does mean that homicide is now the leading cause. We've also seen, as you can see here, 40 accidents, 20 unexpected natural deaths, 12 deaths that were undetermined. Many of these are often suspected to be child abuse, and it is unable to be proven during the investigation. And then sadly, seven suicides in which children took their own lives. What we see when we review these cases is that infants and toddlers are most at risk. You can see here that 87 of those 208 cases that were infants, and then a number of toddlers as well, but then risk rises again, particularly at age 16 and 17, where we're seeing a number of youth homicides in particular. We find that boys are twice as likely to die as girls. That sort of across all causes of death, we see that disparity. And also that Black families are bearing a much higher burden of high fatalities, with 85% of the 208 cases being to Black children, when Black children are about 62% of our population. And we know, as we review these cases, this is a map, the yellow map on the left shows where we are seeing. The darker areas show where we are seeing the highest numbers of fatalities in the city. We know that this map looks like many other maps that we see in Baltimore. And here, there are maps of poverty, shootings, and racial diversity. So we see these patterns of poverty, trauma, and racism emerging in the child fatalities. And we know that these maps all have their roots in the redlining map in Baltimore City, showing, you know, when they're, when we had housing discrimination throughout the 20th century and before, and that's led to the outcomes that we are seeing now unevenly distributed in the city. So some of our major findings, before getting to the recommendations, a few key things. Child fatalities are preventable. The victims had very high ACE scores, adverse childhood experience scores. Case review found intergenerational trauma and behavioral health challenges, and parent and caregiver behavior plays a huge role in the fatalities. So we're just going to look quickly at that data. Nine out of every 10 child fatalities in Baltimore were preventable. We vote on preventability in each case review, and as you can see, the vast majority were preventable, and we could have, there may have been a way to prevent that child's death somewhere along their trajectory. So we, it's, it's, can be sort of seen as very disheartening, but it's also incredibly galvanizing, because there is a lot that we can do to prevent these fatalities from happening. Around the very high ACE scores, just sharing a bit of data here, we only attribute an ACE to a child during the case review if we have on-paper documentation of that ACE. We were able to find that, for example, 63% of the children had one or both of their caregivers with substance use. 56% had one or both of their caregivers be diagnosed with a mental illness. These should be considered sort of floors or minimums, because there were likely more children whose parents had these issues, and it simply wasn't documented on paper anywhere. So we know that there was a lot of trauma. And then we really see this especially playing out in our homicides, where there are intergenerational challenges. For instance, we saw that 69% of youth who died of a third-party homicide had been charged in the juvenile system, and 71% of their caregivers had been charged in the adult system, 49% for the sale of drugs. We also saw 27% of the youth homicide victims in substance disorder treatment, and 56% of their caregivers were documented to use substances. So we're seeing this intergenerational, this is, gets back to the life course that Rebecca mentioned earlier. And indeed, even further trauma, we, 53% of the caregivers across the board, across all causes of death, were actually maltreatment victims themselves, with Baltimore City Department of Social Services documented. And 24% of them had been in foster care at some point, with many of them aging out. So caregivers who had been in foster care or were abused themselves are highly overrepresented among these cases. And then finally, in 64% of the cases, we found that a caregiver's behavior directly contributed to the death. In some cases, this was very blatant, such as when a child was killed by a parent or caregiver in an act of child abuse. But there were many other cases in which parents exposed the child to hazards, or there was neglect of the child that put them in danger and led to their death. So our major action items, we identified four primary areas of investment that we believe the city needs to make in order to change this reality for children. One is supporting parents of children from birth to 18, especially parents involved in substance use or sale, because we are seeing those intergenerational impacts there. We need to have, work as city agencies to improve systems for identifying children at risk and intervening early. We need to work with our healthcare agencies and providers to prioritize prevention of child fatality, because we did see lack of adherence to best practice that could have really made a difference in the lives of these children and their families. And then sort of more broadly, creating a city where youth have hope and opportunities for a bright future, especially to address the area of youth homicide. And so we identified, you know, there are dozens and dozens of recommendations in this report. We pulled out several that we want to focus on in the next six months. This is in partnership with Monzi, so that, you know, they're acting, as Rebecca shared, as our accountability partner with city agencies to implement these. The next six months, short-term, we're looking at putting in place an MOU for multidisciplinary investigation. This is particularly important for young child deaths. So we need better information sharing across city agencies, a two-generation drug trade intervention to work with youth and their parents, who are both work involved in the drug trade. We've identified several school-based risk factors, particularly for youth homicide, and we want to be working with city schools to do a dive into that data to see how many children are, have those risk factors and what we might be able to do to support them. And then we're going to continue to work on safe infant sleep, because that is still a huge issue in our city. And we had 17 babies die this way last year. So we're expanding our Sleep Safe Campaign through Be More for Healthy Babies, and also working to expand our prenatal and postpartum care coordination, because linkage to resources in infancy and early childhood are critically important to starting families off right. And then more broadly, over three to five years, really working around early school intervention based on those risk factors we've identified in school, particularly early chronic absenteeism, putting in better interventions in place there. Re-envisioning our family support services, many families are able to benefit from family preservation services, for instance, by, from the Department of Social Services, but those are short-term, and families often need longer support. So what can we do to support and help those families? An integrated data system so that we can look at risk factors across systems before child fatality. Again, robust supports for parents using substances, working with hospitals to make sure they are adhering to those best practices, and then more broadly, working on social determinants of health. And finally, we're open for any questions you may have about the process or these recommendations.
Thank you. We're going to go to our next agency, and we're going to come back for questions after we just hear from everyone. Was there anything else that you all needed to add to the report? And this would be for our Mayor's Office of Neighborhood of Safety and Engagement. Is there anything else that you needed to add to the presentation that the Health Department provided?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Monzi was honored to serve with the Child Fatality Review Team, and we're grateful for the partnership that allowed us to take this work to the next level. Director Jackson and Associate Director of Victim Services, Breon Adams, is excited to really continue to work with Executive SFR Team on both the short-term and long-term recommendations. The big part I want to highlight is one that the report emphasized the need for Baltimore City to develop a public health approach to violence. And this has been a cornerstone of the Mayor's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, and part of our, specifically, our youth justice work. And thanks to the Mayor Scott's historic ARPA investment in violence prevention and commitment to this work, we're going to be able to actually fund some of the difficult but necessary systems changes that we think will save lives. So over the next three years, our office will deploy 1.25 million to advance this work. If people are watching, the people that are watching, grant dollars are currently available for organizations doing youth justice work. We specifically have $925,000 earmarked for youth and trauma proposals, and this information can be found at monzi.baltimorecity.gov. And as you heard in the presentation, Monzi will continue to serve as an accountability partner for agencies as we implement these changes to policies and procedures, and hope to be able to bring everyone together to shift outcomes for Baltimore's young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We're going to move on to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Is there anything that you need to add outside of what's been presented by the Health Department? Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Yes, I am here. We do not need to add anything additional.
Can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. This is Faith Leach, and I am the Interim Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. And we stand up by our report, and we don't need to add anything additional to the Health Department's report.
Okay, thank you, Director Leach. We're going to move on to city schools, if they're available today.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Dr. Brooks. I'm sorry, my camera's not working. We don't have anything to offer, but we have been a partner in this work. We are working very diligently to address and work very closely with our families, especially those that have had attendance concerns. So we are working with our family community engagement specialists to be able to work with those families around the attendance. We also have created student wellness support teams to be able to partner and work with outside agencies and assisting families who have had inconsistent school enrollments, where we've seen multiple enrollments at schools, as well as attendance, to provide that additional support for those families and those students.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. The Police Department.
There, I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. I'm also joined by Major Latonya Bishop of Special Investigations, Captain Ebony McCray of homicide, and Lieutenant Latonya Brown of our Child Abuse Unit. We have nothing to add, but we are grateful for being allowed to weigh in on this important discussion.
Thank you all for being here. Our Fire Department.
Hi, this is Captain Haighley from Baltimore City Fire Department. I'm very happy to be a part of this important team of Child Fatality Review and look forward to continuing the work. I don't have anything to add to the report.
Thank you, Captain Haighley. The State's Attorney's Office, and I understand just for Committee members, when we do our questions, it looks like you, Seth, may have to leave at 11 o'clock, so just want to make that note.
Good morning, everybody. Yousef Fud, Legislative Director for the City State's Attorney's Office. That is correct. We are set to testify for the Ghost Guns Hearing in the Senate today, as well as need to make time to drive down. Nothing in particular to add to the Health Department's presentation, but I would like to note, we're working on an appropriation in the state budget to have $500,000 of grant funding through our office as a pass-through to nonprofit organizations in the city to fund violence prevention and community service initiatives. I'll make sure that that definition is expanded, so that we can also use that, those funds to fund health prevention and things of that sort. So I'll reach out to the Health Department and make sure that that definition is expanded, so that we can fund this type of prevention as well.
Thank you for sharing, and thanks for being in attendance today. I'm not sure if we had anyone from DSS, Department of Social Services. And if not, the Behavioral Health System of Baltimore. Okay, and for those last two state agencies, no one is in attendance. We're going to go ahead and just open up the floor for questions. Committee members, if you have any questions, as always, please raise, use the raise hand function, or you can also signal if your camera is on. I'm going to start with just a few questions. There are a lot of recommendations within the report, and I would like to know how we ensure that they are implemented. So the first question is specifically, who is ultimately responsible for ensuring implementation? How is the implementation reported and tracked also to ensure accountability?
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. I appreciate the question. I think this is a really important issue in general, and I can walk you through how it has been and our efforts to reorient how that can happen in the future. As I said, there is an initiative really for zero to three, but it extends to five, called Be More for Healthy Babies. And that is a very clear initiative in the city that's been going on for a decade, that has a strategic plan related to the reduction of infant mortality and the reduction of racial disparities. It has private and public funding, not enough of it for sure, but it has multiple agencies working together, grading funding streams together. So we breed public-private funding streams together to ensure that we have a strong care coordination system for pregnant women and infants, and we have communication plans, and we work with all of the agencies, like our childcare, Head Start, Healthy Start, all of our home visiting programs. We work collectively, and we have a benchmarking system and a dashboard and a process by which we work together. So for the younger residents, there is a strategy. It's very underfunded, both on the public and private side, and it has a major funding gap coming up, because some of the major private funders won't be available to fund, close to about $2 million a year coming up in the fiscal year '24. So on that side, that is how the action plan has been implemented. So each agency in the Child Fatality Review itself is responsible for the actions for which they are assigned. You know, if it happens to be a systems issue that the Department of Social Services needs to take action upon for the zero to five-year-olds, they are assigned that action. But Be More for Healthy Babies as an initiative has the infrastructure to track. So that is. So that is fairly clearly laid out, though underfunded by a long shot since a lot of investment needs to happen in early childhood. When it comes to ages, school age, so kindergarten through the end of, through age 17, it becomes, there isn't the same kind of citywide initiative that's supporting the collective agency response to accidents. And what happens, as you saw with Kathy Costa's slides, the significant increase in deaths in children when they reach the teenage years. There have been piloted efforts and smaller efforts. You have Safe Streets, you have various citywide smaller efforts that are happening, but they aren't necessarily happening within a strategic framework. And so I think the result of that is that there are a lot of very good recommendations that have happened historically. And there is funding that's put to particularly important issues, but it's not seen in a bigger picture context, like across the life course. What is the initiative that's a long-term vision? That seems to be where we have maybe some gaps on the, at five to 17-year-olds that we would suggest is really important. The suggestions that we made in the first six months will help to get us to create, the creation of such, such an approach. You know, and we could mirror it on Be More Healthy Babies. But Mozy is the accountability side of the, the recommendations that are put forward by the, by the Fatality Review Report. The Health Department is responsible for the actual review process. Mozy is helping us to have an executive committee that is stationed in the mayor's office to review these recommendations quarterly and to make sure that each of the agencies are situated and understand their actions going forward. And I think that there's a lot of emphasis being put on, on agency responsibility going forward. There isn't a funded action plan that we have specifically in the Health Department. So I want to make sure it's clear that it cannot be the Health Department alone putting forward recommendations for the five to 17-year-olds. But, but it is a partnership with Mozy and the other agencies that are part of Child Fatality Review.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand just the answers to the question. The second, I'm going to start with the second question. When we talk about accountability reporting and tracking, that's going to be handled by Mozy. For the first question about who's ultimately responsible for ensuring the implementation, you're stating that each agency, or just, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Nene, each agency is going to be responsible themselves. And right now, there's not one direct hub? Or is that Mozy? I'm just trying to make sure I don't misunderstand.
These are the things that we're working through with the Executive Committee. There is definitely for the zero to five, there is a mechanism, Be More Healthy Babies and its steering committee that can put forward and make sure, and has an accountability process that's, that's been historically in place. I think Mozy and we are setting up this, we have a child fatality dashboard now and we will be holding the agencies accountable with Mozy in charge for the recommendations that get made from this point forward and for what we put in the Child Fatality Review Report.
So you guys are going to be working with Mozy on it. I can take that one. I'm going to move on to the second part of this question. How is the implementation status communicated to the public and other stakeholders for transparency? Earlier, it was, it was said that we want the community involved in this. So how was the implementation status communicated to everyone?
This is going to be through a public-facing dashboard for child fatality that is being put in place. And Kathy can, I'm going to punt to her to talk a little bit more about the dashboard. For the zero to five, just in terms of accountability, we have a community action team. It's a CAB, a Community Action Board, that is well aware of all of the recommendations that are made through Child Fatality Review. And we have two neighborhood groups in Patterson Park, North and East, and in Optin Druid Heights who are also made aware of the recommendations made through the reports so that they can reflect on, so the neighborhoods and the community leaders can reflect on the recommendations and vet them for feasibility or how a grassroots partner could be participating in that. We have on the adolescent side, a committee of Youth Advisory Council that is involved in a lot of our efforts. And we have yet to use the Youth Advisory Council, particularly around Child Fatality Review. We use them more for sexual health and reproductive health. But that could very well be a vetting council as well for young people around the recommendations that are made for adolescents. And we are very strong proponents for vetting recommendations that are made in this review by grassroots and organizations and residents because feasibility is really what matters at the end of the day and recognizing how important this recommendation might be to the individuals who would be receiving them. And Kathy, do you want to talk a bit about the dashboard?
Sure, happy to do that. We have created the first iteration of a dashboard that provides data on the child fatality review cases, how many have been reviewed, sort of, you know, the underlying risk factors, but also on our recommendations that we're making as a team, whether they're policy practice, community education focused. And in the second iteration, we will be focusing on how we will actually demonstrate visually progress on each of the priority recommendations that were featured in the five-year report. But the plan is for that dashboard to be public and available through the Health Department website.
I'll, I'll come, I'll come back to that. A lot of what I heard was, hey, we're underfunded. I heard that a few times. I know that everything within this report, the recommendations that are here are within the mayor's. They fall somewhere within the mayor's pillars. Obviously, we have this huge ARPA investment. Mozy has, Nick with Mozy has talked about how they have some grant money to provide to youth organizations. What other ARPA requests have been put in or have there been ARPA requests submitted? And I know that agencies have until, I guess, maybe the end of March or sometime within March to submit these. But are we going to be submitting ARPA requests for some of these recommendations is my question.
Kelly, if you're on, you might want to, I, I'm not sure if that would be a good place for you to step in. I do know that Mozy has an ARPA request that will support us to have another FTE to support the actual child review process and make sure that the incredible volume of materials that you need to go through for the collection of information for each case is, is, is put together and the action plans are oriented in a way that makes sense and are readable and so forth. So we will be getting another FTE for that. As far as what other requests ARPA has, that have been made to ARPA related to Child Fatality Review. Dr. Girassa, the Health Commissioner is unfortunately, we're speaking on her behalf and she's not here today. So I'm not privy to, as a Assistant Commissioner, all of the different ARPA requests that have been put in place.
Kelly, Ms. Eastman, if you can furnish to the committee ARPA, ARPA requests that were specifically put in, in line with recommendations. For Nick with Mozy, if you could also let us know if there are additional requests that were put in that can impact these, it's a lot of recommendations within this report. And when we talk about being underfunded and we want to make sure that, like I said earlier, that this is not something that's being recycled and repeated. Every time we come back with this report, obviously, everybody who's on this hearing and everyone who knows about it, everyone that is communicated to, they want to make sure that these numbers are going down. And I want to make sure that we're being intentional, intentional and targeted. This is just to make sure that it happens. I'm going to move on to see if any other committee members have any questions at this time. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, you said that boys die at twice the rate of girls across all causes. But is that also the same across all ages?
Kathy, if you want to go through the data again, you can pull up the slide if you want.
Yeah, oh, sure. I think I might be able to review without. It is across all causes and it is similarly across all ages. With youth homicide, we see certainly more boys in, who are victims of homicide. Every year, there are a few girls, but it's, it's definitely weighted heavily toward boys. But with our second leading cause of death, and this is where we're seeing, you know, the infants, sleep-related infant death, it's about 60/40, boys to girls. And that is a national trend. And there is a belief, it's still sort of understudy that boy infants are more vulnerable to, to sleep-related infant death and suffocation, accidental suffocation in the, in the bed. Boys are also more likely to complete a suicide attempt. Sadly, and we have even seen more boys being the victim of child abuse homicides and, and undetermined deaths where child abuse is suspected.
Interesting. I'm wondering about vehicle crashes. Nationally, this is the number one cause of death for people ages one to 19. It accounts for 20% of all deaths. By comparison, homicide nationally makes up 15%. For that reason, it would be really helpful to me to be able to see this not tied in with other causes like fire and other accidental deaths. I think for comparison between the city and that national trend, just given that, those stats, that it'd be best to have that pulled out separately. I'm wondering if you can speak to that and also in determination of preventability, I regard every crash death and every crash as being preventable. I would like to know if your determinations of preventability similarly conclude the preventability of crashes.
Thank you for that question. I think it's, it's an excellent one. In Baltimore City, we definitely do not see motor vehicle crashes as anywhere close to, I mean, homicide is the leading cause of death for our young young people in Baltimore City. We do definitely can disaggregate the deaths, so we can bring that to you. And Kathy may even have it right in front of her, so.
I do.
You can share that. And once in, just in terms of the question around preventability, absolutely. You know, preventability would be anything around, was the person drinking and driving? Were they speeding? Were they, you know, what was, what were the factors related to the vehicle, automobile, automobile accident? And nine times out of 10, those things are preventable and public health messaging, working with city schools, working with families are all solutions for, you know, that's what seat belts were all about. One of the biggest successes in public health ever was the, you know, implementation of seat belts in cars to prevent fatalities and automobile crashes. So you are right on absolutely that there are very specific ways in which we can prevent automobile, automobile accidents. And I'll pass to Kathy to share the disaggregated data.
Sure. So of the 208 children over that five-year period, 11 died in motor vehicle crashes. I do have some more detailed information on those. I think it was important to note, in no case was the child who died, the driver. They were either passengers of cars or they were, there was, for instance, a child on a scooter as well. In most cases, I think in all cases, in which the child was in a car, the child was not using a seatbelt. Or there were, and when they were young children, there was, they were either not in a car seat or there was a car seat malfunction. We did indeed, when we voted, determine that all 11 of these deaths were preventable. We do have a partner on the Child Fatality Review Team, Safe Kids Baltimore, that works specifically to prevent motor vehicle crashes and pedestrian-related fatalities. So we work with them around prevention. They do car seat checks and car seat giveaways in, in the city. Work a lot with the Baltimore City Fire Department and Department of Transportation on programs like Safe Routes to School and education of children and families about, you know, safe bicycle, scooter use, using helmets, et cetera, in order to prevent these fatalities.
Thank you. I'd be really interested to see incorporated into that analysis, an assessment of environmental conditions. So often, whether youth fatalities or otherwise, part of the preventability of vehicle crashes and pedestrian crashes and crashes particularly between cars and vulnerable road users has to do with the roadway, the streets having been designed to encourage unsafe driving conditions in the first place. Typically, when we see auto-related deaths, what we see are possibly something, you know, I think youth who require child, car seats and things like that is kind of, in a way, it's an outlier in that it adds a third kind of layer to it. But what we often see are drivers driving in an unsafe manner, whether that's speeding or just, you know, distracted or whatever, but generally also in conditions that were encouraging of unsafe driving kind of as the norm in those locations. So I'd be interested, you know, much as I assume that we look at environmental conditions within a household that, that in the public space, there'll also be some analysis of the environmental conditions. If I could just ask you for any information, is it possible that you could share with us the underlying data for all of these, the fatalities that went into your analysis?
When you say underlying data, what specifically are you looking for? Just one quick thing on the automobile and the environment. We do have an analysis Jonathan Gross, our epidemiologist, has looked at traffic intersections and issues related to where there have been more accidents. So there are ways of assessing if a fatality has happened, what the environmental factors and conditions were. So your point is well taken and it's something that we do look at. But can you be specific about, I mean, we, we certainly can share information related to data from child fatality and we have much of it, lots of it. So if you have specific requests, we can definitely respond to those.
Yeah, I, I just, I often feel like every time I get one question answered pursuant to some kind of analysis request, I, I end up with two more questions that I want to get answered and, and I find it easier to have the spreadsheet of like the death, you know, or the, the thing, and all the different conditions. But I just, a spreadsheet of like what it is you're looking at, the cause of death, age of.
Sure, we can share with you, actually, Councilman Dorsey, if you're interested, we can share with you what our data collection form looks like. So you can see all the variables that we collect data on. And then, and then from there, we can sort of work through whatever you're interested in, for sure. I mean, that, you know, our interest is in trying to, but we definitely also have limited resources. I think that might be why people, you know, when we, when we're responding to data requests, we want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that's leading somewhere. So just being really careful and clear about sort of what the actions are that relate to those data requests. But for sure, we'd be really, maybe we start with sending Kathy the form that shows all the different kinds of data that we do collect.
Happy to do that. And, and just note too, that because the process is confidential and the, the identifying information would be, would not be able to be shared. But the underlying, for instance, on the motor vehicle, where the, where the crash has happened, what the, you know, whether speeding was involved, so on and so forth, that data would be available.
Yeah, appreciated. All right. And then I'd like to get, see that form and be able to follow up with you. If you could send that to me, email to me. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For anyone else interested in the accident section, it's, there is a decent amount of inch, there's a decent amount of information. Pages 41 to 42 that actually speak to certain examples. Um, pages forty-one to forty-two that actually speak to certain examples about accidents um, in some of the instances, instances on why it may have occurred. So on for anyone else who's interested, pages forty-one through forty-two of the report may be helpful, um, as well. For the Health Department, um, thanks for working with Councilman Dorsey, just to get him the information that he needs. Um, I believe that I saw Councilman Conway's hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I had a couple of questions as well. Um, so I noticed that, uh, of course, the headline on all this is that homicides lead, lead the day for, for children under seventeen and under. Um, and we had sixty-nine homicides. I was curious, um, given all the talk about the role of caregivers, uh, how many homicides were at the hands of caregivers or related to caregivers versus someone who is unrelated or does not oversee the young person or child? Are we able to? Talk.
It was forty-five homicides were committed by a third party and twenty-four were committed by a parent or caregiver. And the age difference is pretty striking among those as well. The ones committed by a parent or caregiver were all children under seven, mostly infants and toddlers. And they were all older than seven for the third parties.
Got it. And so that, that, um, that sort of breakdown changes as folks get older. So the sixteen, seventeen-year-olds caregiver is not really so much in the picture. Um, certainly for those early years, uh, zero to maybe three, uh, we see caregivers being the, the leading cause.
Yes, exactly.
Um, and then, uh, my, my, my other question is with regards to the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, where we see that number spike back up. What, what are the leading causes there? Clearly, it's less the caregiver, but are we seeing gun violence is the cause? What, what are we, what are we seeing there?
The vast majority of the homicides are due to gun violence. Um, I could look up the specific percentage to you, but by far, um, it, it is, it is gun violence. Um, and then rarely there will be, you know, other sorts of, um, abusive trauma. But it's, yeah, guns.
Got it. Uh, I would love to see that break down.
Sure.
Seventeen-year-olds. Um, and then my, my last question was about the disparities by race. Um, so y- you showed a chart that showed that eighty, eighty-five percent of the, uh, families that experienced child fatalities were black. Do we see that same disparity across ages? So when we look at zero to one, one-year-olds, three-year-olds, so on and so forth, are we seeing that same disparities for black families? And, and later on down the line, of course, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, where we see it spike back up, do we also see it amongst black families? Uh, or does that change? Does that percentage change?
It's across the age, it's across the whole, um, child fatalities. They're predominantly to African-American families from zero. And it's disproportionate to the, there's a greater disparity than what the population's ratio breakdown is.
Got it. And Madam Chair, if I may, just to tie on to the back of that, that question, do we see, um, you also shared a map of, um, child fatalities across the city. I'm really curious if we see, um, um, that, that, that still ties to, um, substance abuse rates amongst census tracts and neighborhoods. My, my guess is yes, but I just wanted to confirm that.
It does. I think it's a little, yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
Oh, I was going to say, I don't think that, um, at least I haven't seen, um, a detailed map of substance use um, across the CSA's in the city, but, um, it, it, we see so much substance use disorder in the families, um, of the children we are reviewing that, um, they do seem very aligned.
And I would say that, um, that's a really, really important question related to substance abuse. We do see substance use disorder as a major underlying factor, particularly the young kids, zero to five. It is predominantly, we see it in all of these households. So I do think the ability to get our arms around that denominator around substance use disorder in the city, where it's taking place, what the factors are, is incredibly important and really would look to the Behavioral Health System of Baltimore to help with that.
Awesome. Um, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I'm just looking if there are any other committee members, um, who had any questions at this time. Please, Councilman Torrance.
Madam Chair, my question is a, a little deeper thought into the intergenuine drug trade. But have we looked at intergenerational incarceration as well, beyond just drug trade? Because what I'm starting to notice is that there's a trend in terms of not only the drug trade, but other crimes as well. And the previous disposal of youth to those other crimes and that type of mindset. So what I'm questioning is, have we looked at going beyond DGS and looked at public safety more broadly, since we know that we have a largest number of persons on parole probation and looking at how that impacts the family dynamic as well?
Kathy, if you wanted to, um, share, we collect a lot of information around incarceration of parents and caregivers in households. But really looking into that intergenerational, um, issue has not, um, we, I, I have not seen an analysis, um, quite like that. But Kathy, please share what data we do have.
Sure. Um, so across the board of all causes of child fatality, thirty percent of the children had had one or both caregivers incarcerated, um, at some point during their lives. So that is, it seemed to us to be quite a high percentage. We also do look at, um, just whether or not a child had parents who had been criminally charged at all in the adult system, not just incarcerated. Um, I'm not sure if I have that number for all children handy right at the moment, but I could find it. It was quite high. Um, I believe that it was over sixty percent um, of children had had parents have some charge in the system, but we do have that data.
So my question is going beyond just their immediate caregiver. Was the caregiver's parent incarcerated is my question, right? Because what we're finding, and I come from a household where my parents were incarcerated, right? So I'm trying to understand is the predisposure to certain things and understanding like where is this happening in terms of our communities? Because when you see it, it's become a generational thing for some families. So how can we prevent it? And, and I say go deeper than juvenile services, because we're seeing at the state level, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, it's not a question, but at the state level, we're seeing advocates and communities saying that we need to have better wraparound services prior to releasing persons back into Baltimore. So especially for women. So like my mom was incarcerated. When she was released, she had to become mom again, but also learn and work through being, getting a second chance, right? So how are we supporting families? Because we know that if this person is being returned, more likely the recidivism rate is we're trying to lower. But we also want to make sure that we're not predisposing our child to also being a part of a generational, I don't want to say curse, but a generational, uh, impact on their life, right? It will continue for generations. So I just want to know, do we go deeper just in the immediate parent? Go deeper and look into what their background was too? Because at the end of the day, environments create situations where people have no choices and things happen.
Councilman Torrance, I think you're absolutely, um, right on. Um, we've done a fair amount of work in city, the city jail system pre, prior to COVID. Um, just doing, uh, education sessions, say, for example, around safe sleep or around reproductive health for women, really trying to understand the systems. And what we found on discharge from the jail was one person responsible for all of these folks going back into the city. There was sort of one care coordinator, this is for women leaving the detention center. Um, and it was astonishing, really. And so I think you are, there is no question that the support system around families with, um, with incarceration right now, intergenerational or not, is a major issue, particularly around parents and how they are supported coming out of the jail system. Um, but certainly, you know, I, I haven't seen, Kathy, y- you, you may have, an analysis of how incarceration is, um, sort of, you know, that is intergenerational. I'm sure that there, the data would bear that out. It certainly does for substance use disorder, it does for low birth weight, it does for many, many things, where you see generation after generation with repeated instances of situations. So I think the point of bringing up the life course approach and kind of, um, making sure that we're really paying attention to not just the situation at the time of the death, but what is happening in, um, I, in the situation in the household and then how the household actually got to be in the situation that they're in. Uh, you know, the intergenerational nature of either substance use disorder or other kinds of factors like, uh, the juvenile system or the, or the, uh, or the detention system in general is incredibly important, and we have to be looking at it from that, um, that vantage point as opposed to responding right away to the incident that is occurring and trying to correct it, because that is so far downstream for what we really need to be focusing on. So, um, I mean, I, I, I agree, and I think that it's not something that was in the recommendations in terms of an analysis, but I think that we could certainly include and start to think about that. Kathy, I, I saw that you wanted to say something.
Oh, sure. I would just say that it's only in a very small number of cases, just on a, from a practical standpoint, only in a very small number of cases do we know the child's grandparents' names and dates of birth. Um, and so in those very limited number of cases, we do actually, um, look up records and, uh, determine whether they had experienced charges or had been incarcerated. Um, but for the vast majority, we don't. That information isn't gathered as part of the, um, law enforcement investigation of the child's death. And we, um, we just, we simply don't have their identification information to look up. We had made an effort in the past to try and calculate an adverse childhood experiences score for each of the child's parents, as well as the child, and just simply found that we just don't have access to records in order to be able to do that. But we do agree that it would be really valuable to see that intergenerationally.
Thank you. My next question is related to cultural competency in terms of service delivery. Have we evaluated the cultural competency of our agencies to see where we are in terms of communicating as well as being competent to understand the realities that persons are faced? And I'm looking at it across race, economics, to really be clear that sometimes we may offer a service, but we are not offering, offering in the right manner. So are we doing that, that inflection and reflection on how we deliver services to ensure that we are being culturally competent?
I think this is a incredibly important, uh, question and one that we've been working on hard. I can give the examples of Be More Healthy Babies. What we have done with Be More Healthy for Healthy Babies is we have, um, put in place, I guess, about six or seven years ago, a, I, Race Equity Committee, uh, that was dedicated to getting everyone trained. That would be, um, our early childhood providers, so, uh, Healthcare Access Maryland that does care coordination for pregnant and infants in the city. Um, our home visiting providers, our WIC, Women, Infants and Children Nutrition Providers, our early intervention providers, our adolescent reproductive health providers, for those who are in the Bureau of Internal Child Health, and then our city partners. We have them trained by the, um, People's Institute for Survival and Beyond and, um, a series, many, 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 um, painstaking hours of discussion around race relations, which has helped us to really look at, uh, redlining in the city and how that historic redlining has a direct impact on all the work that we're doing. Um, we have a bibliography of, uh, books that, for people that are hired into the work of Be More Healthy Babies, um, that would be required reading, including things like Not in My Neighborhood. Um, we're currently reading The Black Butterfly. So the, the, the efforts that are being made for early childhood are very intentionally looking at both race relations, um, I think, I, the economic, poverty and, um, its impact on people's, uh, ability to make changes in their lives. It's a huge issue in this area. We're working a lot with the Maryland Cash Campaign. Um, so there is a very slow incremental, um, change that is extremely intentional, but it is slow, I mean, I won't lie, um, to really have people of all races and of all, you know, economic, I, I, profiles in the work that we're doing really reflect both system-wide, like what is the system created, and also personally reflecting on what is your personal relationship with your, um, colleagues and with the clients that you're working with. We are, we worked a lot on the debate between are we client-driven or client-partnered? And I think we've worked more on being, being residential partnered as opposed to residential-driven or, you know, professionally-driven. We're trying to create sort of partnerships and synergies between people as opposed to sort of power dynamics between people, which are necessarily creates sort of more, um, confusion. So this has been a big, big area of work. Um, I believe we've invited child fatality member agencies, Kathy, to the People's Institute trainings. I know that city schools in the early childhood area has participated. Um, I think it's, um, that particular training we only highlight because it is very powerful. It's a major commitment of time. Um, but we have many staff and colleagues taking it repeatedly because there is so much you can get out of, um, each time you go through it. So, um, when we are trying to put in place, and then COVID hit, um, an onboarding process where there's required reading of staff, there's required understanding of the residential area, certainly with the COVID, um, and our work with children and vaccination, we, um, are working very hard on making sure that our work is, works, works through peer ambassadors as opposed to, um, uh, other mechanisms that might be more of a power dynamic that is not particularly successful or useful. Um, there's a huge recognition, at least on the public health side, and I would love for the other partner agencies and CFR to, to talk about what they're doing. But I think on the health side, we have a very solid recognition from both fetal and infant mortality review interviews we get from moms and from, um, discussions in general, that there's a huge mistrust of the medical system in our city and, you know, legitimate distrust. And, um, if we're not acknowledging that and understanding it and understanding the systems behind which that took place and the individuals and how that, um, happened, i- it's very difficult to work in the city. So I would say that this is a huge, major intentional effort on our part, um, uh, to try to address cultural competence. That would be inclusive of people living with disabilities. So we spent a lot of time more recently really understanding how, um, we don't, we're not really, um, allowing, especially in the virtual environment, we're learning a lot from folks who are people living with disabilities about how challenging it is to be in that virtual environment if you do have a disability and how to account, how to make sure that we have closed captioning and make sure that people have, you know, access to things that they should. Um, and then folks with, who are here who don't speak English, we have, um, purchased certain applications, like the Genie application that allows web-based translation of our services so that there is, if we don't have a Spanish interpreter or we don't have a French interpreter, we can do a, um, FaceTime interpretation, um, with a person's image as opposed to just language line, which I think the city has relied on for a long, long time and it's not, um, it's not adequate. So there are a whole, and we work a lot with NEMA, um, in the city to try to reinforce those things. But, um, I would say that it's slow incremental, but very recognized among the partners with child fatality and particularly the fetal infant mortality of the importance of this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, my question is going to be for the BPD. Um, I just want to know, what is the, what is this for the police department? So I just want to know, what is BPD's role in ensuring the safety of a child and say, other children within a home, once notified or once you're responding to a call for service? I also want to know how are officers trained to recognize if a child may be at risk?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Latonya Bishop, um, the major of Special Investigation Sections within the Baltimore Police Department. Um, and under that unit is the Child Abuse Unit. So upon being notified of an incident of child abuse, um, the unit goes out to determine if it's a case that the Child Abuse Unit will actually handle. If it's a case that they handle, if it's not a case that they handle, that they'll get with the primary officer to give them guidance and direction on how to handle the case. If it's a case that we would handle, uh, it's the responsibility of the lieutenant of that unit to make sure that a thorough investigation is done in reference to the case. Um, as we suggested earlier on um during this meeting, it's a team effort to make sure that we help the children of Baltimore City. And what I mean by that is that the Child Abuse Unit works with a multi-disciplinary team. They meet on, I believe it's a bi-weekly, weekly basis. Um, and that includes the Baltimore City Child Abuse Center, um Child Protective Services, Mercy Hospital, the State's Attorney's Office. Um, we meet with forensic interviewers, Department of Social Service. Um, and at that time, we sit together to review case by case to find out what's the best resources um for the individuals. And Latonya, I don't know if you have anything that I missed or if you want, you wanted to add to that.
Good morning. No, you pretty much covered everything. Um, and again, during those meetings, we actually meet three times a week. So during those meetings, if there's something that comes up, multiple cases that may come up, that's the time that we'll all discuss to make sure that we're all on the same page and what's um will be the best um reports for the family and the children. We work closely with CPS. Um, so during that time, again, we discussed various cases to make sure that um everything is being do- being done correctly for the best interest of the victim.
And Madam Chair, your second question, the training, they have training at the academy, they have yearly training as well as we have um a database called Power DMS where they actually send out policies on a- all crimes throughout the um, the agency. So there would be a, a policy on child abuse cases handled by patrol, a policy on child abuse cases handled by the Child Abuse Unit. Um, they have a I was gonna say in Power DMS, they can go in and they sign for each policy for the cases. And if there's something that the individuals in patrol don't have a clear understanding of, they have a 24-hour hotline to the Child Abuse Unit where they can assist them and give them guidance on the cases that they're handling.
Okay, thank you, Major Bishop and Lieutenant Brown um for being here today, as well as the other folks from the police department. My next question is going to be for city schools. Um, one thing in this, I believe that's Dr. Brooks who's here today. Um, one thing that the report noted is that we have um seven deaths that were by suicide. And it was highlighted that all of the children um attended city schools. Can you talk to um, can you speak to what efforts city schools is taking? Or are they taking in collaboration with others about addressing um suicide for our students? Or what mechanisms are in place? How do you, if you know that a, that a child um may be at risk, um, what are city schools' steps to, to just maybe contact that family? Or get in touch with someone to, to prevent it from happening?
Yes. So good afternoon again, and I do apologize, my camera is not working. But yes, we do uh actually have, as I spoke earlier, we have our student wellness support teams, which consists of our school social workers, school psychologists, school counselors, um our wholeness specialists if our schools have those, where we work collaboratively with our, our students and our teachers uh and building administrators. And if a building administrator or a teacher um hears um where a student has uh saying things that are, sound like they may be thinking about um suicide or have written something in a journal, then those mental health clinicians at the school building do provide those additional supports for the student as well as reach out um to the family to provide additional, both in school supports as well as um outside agency support um for the student. Um, if the student is actually voicing that he or she is going to hurt themselves or others, we do um do emergency petitions um where we do um along with the school police officer escort the student to um the hospital, um where the parent or guardian then meets us there um to be able to get that additional evaluation that is conducted. Also, we do have um group counseling um for students, um and individual counseling, regardless of whether the student has an IP or a 504 plan or SST, to be able to provide um some additional support for students. Um, oftentimes, which we are really working diligently with our families, um oftentimes the student doesn't show it outwardly. And so we ask families if they're beginning to see any changes um in their behavior at home, to please reach out to the school staff so that we are also looking for, for certain things. We also ask um students if they notice any changes in their friends, to be able to reach out to uh, to anyone at school so that we can begin to have those conversations earlier. Um, because as we know, um many of our students um may appear to be okay. And then um we find out later that they were actually suffering um by themselves and not sharing that information. But we do have um a number of our, our school social workers and school psychologists that have been trained in providing um additional supports around those students uh that have suicide ideations.
A, a little bit less than half of the um, the children were chronically, were noted to be um chronically absent from school. Um, how do you, how does a school system address children who are chronically absent?
So we do have um an exact, an attendance um office here um where we work very diligently with our schools. Each school is to have an attendance monitor where we do reach out to families um of those students that have been chronically attendant, uh chronically absent. We also have a truancy policy. We also have incorporated an attendance hotline um that is actually um monitored through my office where if there are any community members or family members um that are having difficulty or see students out during the school day that they know should be in school, can call into this hotline number. Um, and then we then do reach out um to the school to say, we've noticed, um, you know, we just got a call that a student that attended your school has not been in school. We need to follow up um with the family to find out why the student has not been in attendance. Uh, we also, what we're finding is that a lot of it is family resources. They need some additional resources, and that's why the child has not been in school. So we work with outside agencies to get those additional resources. In some cases, the family has just become homeless. And so we work with the Office of Pupil Transportation to make sure that the student then is provided with transportation so that they can attend school or any of those other type of resources that are needed. Um, we also are really working diligently to begin to work with our families of our younger children because we noticed that the attendance issues don't begin in middle and high school, but really began early on at the earlier ages. So we're working really diligently with our, our, our families of our younger children to really talk about the importance of attending school, um those additional resources that we can put in place to assist with that. Uh, and so we've really um worked really diligently uh this year as we look at those being one of the risk factors um for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks, and thanks for joining today. Um, I just want to double check, are there any additional committee members who have questions at this time or additional questions? And seeing and hearing none, I also want to just note that Councilman Balak um has also joined today. At this time, I have a few additional questions. I'm going to try to be brief with them. Um, for the health department, you discussed a few success stories um already. But can you specifically regarding how um the sleep-based deaths um may have been down from the last time this report was done? Um, can you discuss any additional success stories of programs created based on previous review team recommendations?
Kathy, do you want to walk through? Uh.
Sure, I'm happy to talk about, in, in addition to the strides made around sleep-related infant death, we have specifically worked um in particular with the Department of Social Services um to prevent uh child abuse and child abuse and neglect fatalities. Um, we undertook a project uh three or four years ago to review those carefully in depth and made several recommendations for um, for preventing those deaths. In response, I recognize that um Department of Social Services is not here to speak about this today, but they have taken several actions, including hiring a full-time child fatality specialist whose job it is to investigate these deaths, as well as put in place prevention strategies throughout the agency um to ensure that the Department of Social Services CPS workers um have the knowledge and skills they need in order to make good decisions when families are involved, um have young children involved in the child welfare system um to support them um in basically making decisions um that are appropriate around when to um protect the child's safety and remove them from the home. Um, they would better be able to speak to the very specific changes they have put in place, but I know that they've worked um to make those policy and practice changes and put in place training programs um for, for their workers. Um, we have also worked in partnership with Healthcare Access Maryland and Department of Social Services to provide better supports to substance-exposed newborns. Um, this has certainly an impact on sleep-related infant deaths, but we have found that um substance-exposed newborns are also at higher risk for child abuse and neglect fatality. And so the idea is that we want to have a strong public health response rather than a punitive response um for, for um pregnant women and mothers who are using substances. Um, so we're working to improve healthcare services in the city and get uh mothers' access to the gold standard, um, you know, opioid treatment um uh providers for medication-assisted treatment in pregnancy and care coordination to help them um plan for having the baby and whether, you know, to avoid emergency removals um once the, once the baby arrives. Um, and Department of Social Services is working to provide more robust supports to um to mothers and babies through their, a, a non-CPS response. Um, a, a much more kind of supportive um response for uh, for mothers with infants who have been substance exposed.
Thank you. From, from my last question, um, it's not lost on me that, you know, earlier during the hearing, there was a lot of um, there were a lot of comments about being underfunded. Um, and that's not lost on me. What I do want to know is what percentage of the review team's prior recommendations have been implemented? And if some have not been implemented, what are um the reasons outside of, say, budgetary reasons?
Kathy, I don't know if you have the percentage that have been implemented. We, I know that we have certainly the number of recommendations that we have in place and what has been implemented. I don't know if we've done percentages, and I'll let Kathy address that. Um, I can give sort of a very big picture response, Councilwoman McCray, and it was sort of going back to what I said in the beginning, which is if there's a strategy in place, these recommendations naturally fit in because there's nothing that we're learning, at least in my opinion, over the last 10 years that we don't already. But once we, you've gone through these review processes year after year, it's the same issues. Um, so I would just say that, sort of big picture. These issues around child fatality, I mean globally infant mortality, maternal mortality, and child fatality are the indicators of like, it's like really deeply social, big, deep social problems. It's, you know, not, I'm sure, lost on people that there's a very high maternal mortality rate, for example, in a country like Afghanistan because it's just got so many problems. So, you know, when you have a high infant mortality rate, a high child fatality rate, a high maternal mortality rate, it's indicative of very deep-rooted problems. So if recommendations aren't put into a strategy that's a long-term sort of rooted process that brings people together and brings all agencies together, they become these sort of really important, great efforts that are funded for a short period of time. And they do a good thing for those few people that actually are exposed to that program. But the fun, you know, that there's a fatigue with it, the funding fatigue, particularly with private funders when they, you know, when they've given money, they, you know, they want to find a new fancy thing, and then funding goes away. And so it's sort of like you're, it's like a dandelion where if you pick off the top part and you don't get the roots, it's going to keep growing back and keep growing back and keep growing back. And I think a lot of the recommendations that we have take it only on their own, are each sort of these dandelions that really need a comprehensive rooted response. And I think the issues around intergenerational incarceration, intergenerational uh substance use disorder, you know, the intergenerational racism, these are the, these are really the fundamental rooted issues, housing supports that are, you know, what are driving these um, these problems. And so the, really, we need a comprehensive response where these recommendations are taken and, you know, I, a constant, constant attention to them over year, you know, month after month, year after year, is the only way that we're going to have um that happen. And I think with Child Fatality Review, what I have observed, and I'm being very frank, is that we just haven't had a comprehensive response, particularly around adolescents, school age and up, where we really said, we need a life course response to what these issues are, starting in early childhood, making sure that our children are born healthy so that they're ready to learn, so that they read on time, and so that they graduate from high school. Because that trajectory completely influences what happens to them. And if that uh trajectory isn't attended to sort of deeply, um, you know, in a strategic way, I think that we'll continue to see that we might have certain recommendations made, Safe Streets was one recommendation that came out of Child Fatality a while back, other things that are so important, but they're individual sci- somewhat siloed responses. So um, I think there are, that fundamentally, um, we can really do better as a city. Like I think these, that if we collectively take a look at the, the actions, these are just a list of actions, but really put them into sort of a, a strategy that each agency has responsibility for, that we can really make an impact. But that, I don't think has happened to date that I have seen out of Child Fatality Review.
Ms. Anina, I truly appreciate um your response to that question. At this time, um, we're going to conclude with the questions. I don't see anyone um for public testimony, but we're still going to double check. Matt's going to take over just at this time to see if we have anyone available who wants to testify from the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, if anybody joined by computer does want to testify, uh, please use the raise hand function uh or the chat function to let us know. Uh, we have one caller currently uh who I will unmute. Uh, caller, if you would like to testify, uh, please start by stating your name. Caller, you're unmuted. Hey, no response. Uh, we do not have any uh hands raised or chats from anyone who wants to testify.
Okay, thank you, Matt. That's going to conclude the public testimony portion. I want to definitely thank everyone for joining us this morning, and I would strongly encourage um a lot of folks who I know um who'll go back and watch these hearings on our Charm TV Citizens Hub on YouTube, that you um actually take a look and just read the child fatality um report. Um, so you know what, how our agencies, our city agencies, our state agencies, some of our federal agencies are actually collaborating um to reduce these numbers. Um, again, thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for joining this morning. This hearing is now in recess.